Please come to order for the November 13th joint meeting of Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority. May we have the roll call for City Council?
Council members Agajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Garpedian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here.
Roll call for Housing Authority?
Authority members Devine.
Here.
Garpedian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Karazian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Chair Agajanian.
Present.
May we have the report, please?
Agenda for the November 13th, 2018 joint public meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on Friday, November 9th, 2018 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before you is the Director of Community Development regarding requests to initiate preparation of an inclusionary zoning ordinance and/or a development impact fee for the benefit of providing affordable housing. One A is City Council motion initiating preparation of amendments to the zoning code to adopt the citywide inclusionary zoning ordinance and the in lieu fee resolution. B is a City Council motion initiating preparation of amendments to the municipal code to adopt a commercial development impact fee. C is City Council motion initiating preparation of amendments to the municipal code to adopt an ordinance revising the affordable housing exemption for the parks and library impact fee. D is a City Council motion approving an amendment to the professional services agreement C 106766 with Kaiser Marston Associates to increase the contract by $7,500 for a new total amount of $64,500 and to extend the term through January 30th, 2019. E is a Housing Authority Resolution appropriating appropriation in the amount of $7,500.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Chair Agajanian, members of the Housing Authority, we are here before you this afternoon to seek direction as it relates to the inclusionary zoning ordinance, and we do have Mike Fortney who will take you through the presentation that will be on the screen for you as well as in front of you. And as part of that, we do have a design worksheet that is before you, and in each of the areas designated on the worksheet, Mike will pause to see if we can gain some understanding of where the council may be in each of those areas and be able to move on to the next area as the discussion continues. We also have Kathy here with us from Kaiser Marston. She will also be able to answer any questions that you may have. With that, we're going to go to Mr. Fortney.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor Sinanian, Chair Agajanian, sorry. Housing Authority Board members, City Council members, Mike Fortney, the principal housing project manager for the city. So we'll start with the inclusionary zoning first. This is Kaiser Marston and staff's recommendation, the first policy issue, and you'll see it on your worksheet. First question is, should you adopt the IZO so that it is implemented citywide or if you would rather target certain areas of the city? Obviously, if you adopt it citywide, your potential for requiring more affordable housing or bringing more in lieu fee goes up. But it could also be argued that doing it citywide, adopting the IZO, which will inherently promote the density bonus, that you could be promoting that density bonus and providing incentives for developers to adopt that citywide as well. So with that, I would just pause at the first policy issue and see if we have consensus on whether or not it should be citywide or some other form.
Oh, you're asking, waiting for an answer?
Yes.
Let me ask you, ask one question. Is this the same application that we filled out once before?
It is very similar. There's a couple of things that we've added as we've kind of gone through this discussion, but yes, it's very similar.
These are hard exams. I think I took it once and I don't have to take it again.
We thought it was too easy before.
So you want each council member to sound off as to where they stand?
If, I guess the question is, is there consensus? Should this be a citywide or is there? And start discussion.
By show of hands, citywide?
Your microphone, Mr. Mayor.
Can we have a short?
Let me ask you a question, though. Is there, I mean, my gut reaction would be to have it citywide. Is there a good policy reason why we shouldn't do it citywide and limit it to only certain areas?
Staff and KME are both recommending that you do adopt it citywide.
Well, I gotta, before we take a vote, I think it has to be a targeted area because when you do the citywide in areas that was downzoned in the past, in last 10, 15, 20 years, if you can do a 15-unit project today and you implement this inclusionary housing there, they will use the SB 1818 and increase the number of units. Like everybody, this is going to push most developers to go towards SB 1818. We know that. So in an area that there are mostly four units, six units, eight units, 10 units, now all of a sudden, you're gonna have a project that's using SB 1818 instead of 15 units. They're gonna build maybe 20 units where everything else is a lot smaller than that project because of the, it's gonna break the rhythm of some of the neighborhoods, especially in South Glendale where the downzoning took place. This will give an opportunity to bring that zoning back in multi-residential neighborhoods, especially our 1250 areas. We have a lot of them. By targeted areas, I think wherever is close to downtown and surrounding downtown area, I think this program will work the best now. That's me.
And if I could just add, we've heard that concern. One area where you may attack that concern or tackle that concern is the project threshold size, which is coming up pretty quickly in this discussion. If you don't want small projects to take advantage of density bonus, the SB 1818, one way of doing it is still adopt it citywide but exempt projects of 10 units or less or something to that effect. That's another way of addressing it.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not just not, we don't want the project to take advantage of SB 1818. When they take advantage or take, you know, advantage of SB 1818, we have a project that was approved based on that zoning many moons ago, which is never going to be developed because you can't squeeze that many units in that small lot. So it's gonna encourage the developers to increase the number of units, but on the other hand, on paper, it makes sense, but on the other hand, building it is something different because very difficult to comply with all the rules, all the other rules, so.
One other question. Does SB 1818, the bonus that you receive, is any one of those bonuses a parking exemption?
Your parking is automatic.
Automatic. See that? You know, I have a problem. So here's a problem is that we're gonna have these neighbors, and not just South Glendale, but just in general. I mean, one of, aside from high rents, people are complaining about the congested streets, there's no parking, so we're gonna be instituting an incentive, a requirement for developers to add those extra affordable units, which are gonna kick them into the SB 1818 incentives. And one of those incentives is to create less parking, whose cars are not gonna be back on the street. So don't we have a problem there? I mean, that's, there's gotta be a way to solve that.
And just to, just to follow up on that, that doesn't only apply to the added numbers. The incentive, like if you get 35% more, it just doesn't apply to those. The parking incentive applies to all the units in the project.
Well, maybe we should up our parking requirements then if they're gonna come in with SB 1818 by our inclusionary zoning requirements and be exempt from the parking. I don't want more cars coming onto the street because that is a big problem in all parts of the city, especially in South Glendale. So I have a problem with that. I'm not sure this is gonna stop the process today, but it's a problem that I think we need to deal with. We can't ignore it.
I, excuse me. I think we have to look at that parking issue separately. It's not with SB 1818, you don't have any choice. Passed by the state of California, so we can't do much. Let's concentrate on this.
Let's move forward, but I think it's a problem.
Yeah, it's a big problem. I agree with you, especially in downtown Glendale, but let's do this now.
I'd say go forward. I'm not gonna stop this, but it's a concern. I just wanna raise a concern.
Mr. Mayor, if I could suggest, why don't we, in fact, change tax? Go through the entire presentation. Some of these things are interrelated. For instance, with the, with the parking, we may be able to address that by changing the threshold. So if you increase the threshold, smaller projects which would maybe be more apt to take advantage of SB 1818 and not provide any parking, they simply wouldn't be bound by the inclusionary housing.
Not only that, but again, we can look at the parking issue separately as a separate matter. If this is going to result in a, you know, like a fundamental change in the way people project their, you know, their buildings, then we'll look at the, we'll look at the parking requirements and opt.
At a later time, maybe.
Yeah, at a later time.
Again, just a suggestion is if we, maybe we should change tax, go all the way through 'cause some of these may have, we may have solutions or areas that we can address, things that Mr. Najarian just brought up. So we'll go through, and then you have the scorecard, so we'll come back and we'll circle back and then we'll get all of your. So Mike, why don't we go through the entire presentation?
So we're not gonna go item by item and call for?
Yeah, we'll go through the whole thing and then we'll come, we'll circle back 'cause then you'll have heard everything, all the tools.
All right. So the second.
If I can hold on still for a minute.
Of course.
If I can just recommend that each of one of us, as we're going through the issues, so that you don't forget, make your own markings, and then we'll come back and do it publicly after Mr. Fortney's done.
Great, great. So the second policy consideration on the IZO would be what type of development you want to apply it to. You can apply it to ownership, you can apply it to rental, you could apply it to both or you could apply it to neither and not adopt the IZO. Staff recommends adopting the IZO and making it applicable to both ownership and rental. Staff has made, brought up some concerns with ownership under an IZO. We are still recommending that the IZO apply to ownership projects, but there are other policy decisions where we think we address those issues concerning the ownership, and I'll talk about those here shortly. The next policy decision is whether, is the project threshold size. What staff is recommending is five units or greater be, the IZO be applied to five units or greater and exempt four units or less. That is entirely up to you. You can, you can choose a different number than that five. The five units or greater does mirror the density bonus law. That's part of the reason we did that. The concern with the IZO applying to projects of eight, nine, 10 units maybe being a little more challenging than for a project of 21 units or greater, that's one of the concerns that we've heard, and that is why later on I'll talk about the in lieu fee and why we recommend the lower in lieu fee for projects of smaller size than projects of 21 or greater. So, but that'll come up.
You said, I apologize for interrupting. You said that the five to 10 recommendation mirrors the density bonus law, statewide density bonus law? Well, what's the logic behind it? Why is it so?
So, yeah, so to be clear, five units or greater would be, would apply to the IZO, right? Anything less than that, and I, you know, the logic is that a four-unit project, that would be too much of a burden to place on a four-unit or a three-unit project.
But in terms of policy considerations, would setting it low at five as opposed to, let's say, 11, what kind of impact does that have on the market and on the developer's willingness to actually build as opposed to not?
Sure. So, so if you, if you, if you put the threshold size larger from the city's perspective, naturally, you're gonna, you're gonna bring in less fee, right? Because it doesn't apply to as many and/or you won't get as many affordable units because they won't have that requirement. But on the flip side, you know, projects of, say, five to 10 units, somewhere in that range, they don't have the economies of scale, so it is more difficult for them to provide the affordable housing. You apply 15% as an example on eight units. That's 1.2 units. If you round it up, that'd be two units. That's, that might be pretty challenging for a developer of eight units to provide two units that affordable. So the way staff has addressed that is allow them to pay the in lieu fee and charge them a lower in lieu fee than you would say a project larger, say of 21 units or greater. So charge a lesser fee and expect them to pay the fee versus build the units. And it's really economies of scale. I hope I answered your question.
You did.
Okay. Percentage of rental units. Oh, I have, I should mention part of Kaiser Marston's analysis, and somebody from Kaiser Marston, Kathy Head is here in the audience if you would like her to get into this deeper. Part of the analysis that they did was determine both the maximum legally defensible fee as well as the maximum economically feasible fee. They did this both on the IZO, which we're talking about now, and later on when we talk about the commercial development impact fee. So the maximum legally defensible fee is the difference between the product's value at the unrestricted market rate rent slash sales price and the affordable rent slash sales price. Maximum economically feasible fee, the highest fee a product could support before the requirement could potentially be deemed as a constraint on development. I make that statement there ahead of this next slide, talking about our staff and our recommendation on the 11% and 15% ownership versus rental, because a lot of the analysis that went into, that Kaiser Marston did derived us to these numbers, the 11% and 15%. So what Kaiser Marston's staff is recommending that, number one, that you do apply the IZO to both ownership and rental, but that you, you apply 11% requirement on ownership projects and target up to 120% AMI, area median income, and then for rental, you apply 15% and target up to 80% area median income.
So, quick question. That 120% of the AMI, what is the AMI in Glendale now, $56,000, $60,000?
It depends on the household size. A family of four, I think that you're really close to it. Oh, I think you're really close on LA County AMI. So we, so what we recommend, LA County, that every, every affordable housing program that we implement, including the density bonus, is set on LA County median income.
So when you say 11% affordable to ownership projects, 120% AMI is, what does that mean? If the AMI is 60,000, so 120% of this, 72,000. So the way you calculate it is your, your monthly mortgage has to be one-third of 72,000?
Very close. Your, your overall housing cost, which includes your mortgage, property tax, utilities, the whole enchilada, roughly one-third of your income, yeah. The numbers are very close to that, yeah.
Pretty close. So it's like $2,000 a month, everything included, property tax and everything else. Does the association fee part of that?
It is.
So with tax, mortgage, association fee, you have to be one-third of your 120% AMI?
That's right, and utilities also.
Utilities also?
Yeah, not cable, but water, electric.
Right. Okay.
Okay. That the choice for that on the worksheet is number five, is that right?
Oh, on the worksheet?
Yeah.
Question number four? Yes, so we brought four for rental and then five for ownership.
But you're recommending 11%. We don't have that choice.
You're right. I didn't notice that until now.
It's, it would be 11%. I think we have 10 on the scorecard.
Right.
We would ask 11.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
Right, if you would write that one in.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on. One of the things Kaiser Marston and staff are recommending is that the affordable units be consistent with the market rate units in terms of size and quality. That is not something that you have to do. In terms of allowing that option, we've heard that from you, allowing the developer to build smaller units for the affordable units, Kaiser Marston's staff agree that that's an option you should give the developer, but you should get more affordable units in exchange for doing that. So in a rental project, 20% of the units would be affordable, and in ownership projects, 15% would be affordable. That's, that's a view.
I have a question.
So if the developer agrees to build smaller, let's say they're building, I don't know, 50 units or 30 units, and they wanna build smaller units, does that apply to the entire project to increase their number of units, therefore pay, provide 20% or 15%?
No, so I'll use round numbers, just easier on me. Say he's got a base project of 100 units, he's gonna take advantage of density bonus and go with 35%, so go up to 135, but he'd be required to provide 15 affordable units at 15%. But if he wants to make those affordable units smaller than the rest of his market rate units, then we say, fine, but give us 20 units, not 15. So the other units would not change in size, anything like that.
So is there a, is there an incentive for a developer to do that? I know you get more number of units, but maybe more rent? Is that what it is? And why would they wanna build more units? I'm just, just wanna understand.
Honestly, I don't, I don't know how many developers would take advantage of that, to be perfectly honest with you. But it is something that we heard from members of the council, that that, that should be an option. I think a developer probably wouldn't build more units, more kitchens, more bathrooms at that lower rent, but I could be wrong.
To add, I, I think, I don't know, and maybe Kathy does, you would probably have to drop the size of that unit down below our, our minimum threshold of 600 to make it, make financial sense. So if you're building 800 square foot, one-bedroom apartments, you could split that into two 400 square foot. But that would drop below our threshold, and, and I, I don't know, but I think that you would have to go significantly below our threshold to make it financial sense to where you would actually build.
Okay. And I think, you know, those getting, getting that detailed, it really hasn't been worked out. That may be on a product per product basis that you wanna prove something like that. There may be, you may have a policy that you don't want to go below 600 square feet on a one-bedroom. That, those kind of details, we really haven't worked out. Overall, though, the policy would be if you wanna provide smaller units, you gotta provide more.
And one other question. If they are building a different unit mix, basically, if they build 100 units, 90 of them are two bedrooms, 10 are one bedroom, how do you, what's the ratio for, for this 20 or 15%? You say 15% of the 20, two bedrooms are affordable, and 15% of, how do you, how do you determine the percentage between one bedrooms and two bedrooms?
Sure. So we do this all the time with the density bonus products that we have. For simplicity's sake, in a perfect world, developers providing equal number of ones, twos, and threes, and he has to give us three units, easy enough. You're gonna give us a one, you're gonna give us a two, you're gonna give us a three. But what we do is basically, we look at the unit mix, what's the percentage? If 90% of the units in his project are two-bedroom, like in your example, then 90% of the units that he would have to provide us is affordable would be two-bedroom. That's the simplest answer. That's how we've done the density bonus. We don't, we don't anticipate doing it any other way unless directed otherwise with the IZO.
So I think in that case, if the 90% of the units are two bedrooms, they may take advantage of splitting these two bedrooms into two one-bedrooms and make, build smaller units and have more number of units, basically.
They may, mm-hmm, they may.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, is that something we want?
I think the council, Mr. Agajanian especially, was, because the project is being built, basically. The square footage doesn't change, but we wanted to get more number of units in the same project instead of 100 units.
Smaller square footage.
Maybe we can get, within the same square footage, 120 units, for example. And we, we wanna give them that incentive to be able to do it, because by code, they cannot do it. But if you have the incentive, they can split like a two-bedroom into two one-bedrooms and have more number of units.
My concern, I understand that, and I remember that commentary. My concern is that if we design this in a way where it encourages people to chop up units, make them smaller, and put more of those out in the market, then we're not providing sort of the family size, we're not creating the conditions for family-sized units to be built in Glendale, which is something that we've stated is a goal for us.
Good point.
Just putting that out there.
Good point.
But even, excuse me, even for the family size, the unit is not proper. If you wanna keep the family, then you have to change that. It shouldn't be two bedroom. If it's a larger square footage, then might be that will be three bedrooms in the same space. I mean, if they're gonna make two bedroom and we, we have a family of five, we want in the same unit, two bedroom for a family of five is not proper. So then we have to change the configuration of the units, if that's the concern. The reason I made it smaller because most of the recipients or those who are coming forward are elderly. And I thought maybe make it smaller units rather than one person having 700, 800 square foot, and that most of the times, they're busy in the, you know, what they call, the common room. They, they don't stay in the unit, so they can leave in a smaller unit and we can have more units instead. That was my concern.
Right, and I, that's how I understood it, and I appreciate that concern and I share it. What I'm saying is that those units that are not meant for affordability, I don't want those units, the developers to have an incentive to make those units smaller.
No, no, it's only within the.
Only the affordable ones.
Affordable ones, not, not the ones outside. If they have 15% affordable units, it's within those 15% units, not, not one of them. But point well taken. I mean, we wanna even make the affordable ones for families as well. And, and, yeah. It's a tough balance to keep.
But I, I think what we have to remember is the intent of this, like, inclusionary housing is to get more, oh, I'm sorry. I think what we have to remember is the intent of the inclusionary housing program is to get more affordable housing units. I think we have to keep that in mind as we move forward.
Okay, so, yes, of course. And so going back to what I'm trying to say is, is it possible for someone who's building the part of the regular units that they're going to build, or let's say two bedrooms, can they, instead of providing a matching, whatever, 15, within the 15%, two-bedroom affordable unit, instead of that, doing two one-bedroom affordable units?
That is your, that's your decision.
That's our call.
That's your call, yeah. You could, in, in the.
That way everyone's, I think, gets the result that we want.
We can, we can, we can, I mean, you have, both, both of you have really good points, so I think we can, we can say if that incentive is being used, maybe it could be only a certain percentage of that 15% that is going to be done. So if you have 20 units, only three of them can be split into one bedrooms and create more units, and the rest will stay two bedrooms for families, and therefore you provide more for, you know, seniors, and then you still have some units for families as well. I think those are the numbers that you can work on.
Okay, so give, give more flexibility to the developer to be able to provide smaller units in lieu of a bigger one, because we are trying to increase the affordable number of units, and mainly the elderly being the, sort of the target group for that.
I, I will have to come back to you, of course, after the planning commission, so that, that's something we'll take an even closer look at.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with some recommendations. Number six and seven, I covered on, I condensed my PowerPoint presentation, so on a number of these policy decisions on a single slide. So we have talked about this before, but I'll say it again. We are recommending up to 80% AMI, so that would be 51% to 80% on rental projects being your target, and for ownership, up to 120% AMI. So those are policy decisions six and seven. Eight is duration of affordability. Same with nine. Eight is with rental, and nine is with owner. Fairly straightforward. Old redevelopment law, as well as density bonus, has a 45-year affordability covenant on ownership projects and a 55-year.
Why we don't have any option for number nine? Why we don't have the option of 55 years?
Number eight has the option of 55 years.
Why should be 45 and all of a sudden 99 years?
Yeah, so we, well, we gave, our recommendation, which is 55 years for rental.
On number nine?
On number nine, 45 years for ownership.
No, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
That's why, to have 45 years and 99 years. Why we don't have like 55 years' option?
I, yeah, I almost have to, I could put anything there. Frankly, I could put any, you have the option of doing whatever affordability period you want.
These, these figures are consistent with density bonus. These, these figures are consistent with density bonus redevelopment law. We found that, that the, for ownership units, you had a covenant for a shorter period of time, ten years shorter than, than for rental. So it's, it's merely mimicking a program that the development community is familiar with and, uh, because law had been that way. But you are free to put whatever covenant you want on it. I will tell you, the longer the covenant, the less desirable it is for a market-rate developer to do. If I've got now forty-five years, I can do that, because I know that's the, that's the turnaround, the life cycle of somebody's ownership of a home. But now I gotta do ninety-nine years, now I know that's two cycles.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't say ninety-nine, I'm saying you have the option of forty-five and ninety-nine years. I wanna see like the same thing as, uh, for the, uh, rental, which there is an option of fifty-five years, and for ownership, there is no option of fifty-five years. Why it should be consistent with the other one?
Again, we've made this consistent with existing programs that everyone is familiar with. Right now, um, when we do tax credits, typically, if there even is one being done, in ownership, you would ask for a forty-five-year covenant for affordability. Rental, you ask for fifty-five years, and that's kinda...
That's the norm?
That's the norm in the industry, yeah. And the way you make that sausage. But again, if you want to make that fifty-five years, you can.
I would like to suggest if they agree to it, my colleagues will agree to it. I wanna see that, ownership also to be fifty-five years.
Yeah, the...
So you're gonna take all these recommendations to planning commission?
Yes, we'll take your direction.
We're gonna take, uh, take a poll at the end, and then, okay, the sum of those recommendations.
Okay, uh, design standards, that's, uh, number ten. Uh, staffs and Kaiser Marston's recommendation, again, requires affordable units to be of similar size in qualities of market-rate units. I feel like we've gone over this already.
Yes, that's what we're discussing.
Yeah, we, we, we did, right. I apologize. Number eleven would be off-site productions, I, my...
So what was your recommendation?
If we can touch on standards, um, one of the issues that you had raised, uh, the, the Housing Authority Council had raised before, was difference in finishes. Could the affordable units have a lesser finish than, much like, uh, the smaller size? Lesser finish than the market-rate units? You can do that if you want, but we would recommend against it, and I, I'm willing to bet that there are no developers that would do it, because eventually, you're gonna wind up with a market-rate unit, lesser finishes, as you, as you do that. But I wanted to, I know it came up before, and so we wanted to address it.
I mean, I don't think that would make too much of a difference in the development or the building costs if they did that. I mean, we're not talking about, you know, fifty or seventy-five percent of the units, so it wouldn't make that much difference in the cost. And, um, they'd probably get a better price for the more, uh, that they, they, uh, bid for. So, um, I think, I think I agree with you on that.
Sorry, I disagree, because some of the units, the luxury units, you can buy bathroom, uh, units for work, or whatever you're using there, the lavatory and others. For the expensive units, the, those units are so expensive. So if they want to use a cheaper one for affordable housing, I don't see, what's the reason? The, they would be, uh, delighted to, you know, developers would be glad to make it a cheaper unit for those which they are making affordable. Why they have to pay like, there's units like eight, eight thousand dollars. You can buy it from Home Depot for a hundred and eighty dollars. There's big difference. If I have a big complex, let's say, a hundred units, I'm gonna construct in Glendale, fifteen percent, let's say, is affordable, that comes to lots of money to have same units as the luxury, of what you use in the luxury unit. So I think they have to have the option to use whatever they feel like it. I go for my own house, I buy from Home Depot, but there are some people, they don't want to. They spend twenty thousand or thirty thousand for the units in the bathroom. So why they have to...
Questions, sir.
I have just one suggestion to throw out to you to consider as well. One way that we've done it in some cities is to have the base model have to be the same throughout all the units. And then any extras or, or amenities that homebuyers choose to buy from the developer are then separate, and so the luxury units can have the marble and the Sub-Zero, et cetera. And, and that wasn't included in the base model. It, it's an option.
So they can upgrade.
They can upgrade.
They can do upgrades.
Right.
Options.
I, I don't remember that we ever looked into the finishes when we approved a project overall.
Which you should have.
No, no, I mean, no, no, I mean, even for, for...
What, you forget the hotel discussion, two burners versus one burner? Get into it, brother.
I like your sense of you.
Oh, we did, we did, we...
No, no, I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm, no, no, I'm, overall, when we, when it comes to design review, we review the design of the project, and we make sure that it's, it, you know, complies with every zoning code, right, as well as the planning codes. So I never, uh, some, some projects, when they're built for ownership housing, they build some of the luxury units, as was mentioned, you have the base unit, then you can upgrade from that. I don't, I never remember that we got into the, the weeds of, uh, dictating which unit has to have what. So affordable units can be built a little bit different. Then the ones that are gonna pay more rent, of course, they want more luxury. So you can have the granite and all, I, I never, I don't remember that we ever looked into the finishes or the products that they put in there, or the fixtures that they use in the...
You haven't, it goes more towards the, the global idea of all the units should be the same, whether they're rent-restricted or, or market-rate. They should all enjoy the same level of amenity.
But they don't.
The density bonus law, and we don't look into that, but, but our policy has been, have all of the units be the same, in our affordable units and, and elsewhere. The issue came up before, though, why not let the developer and have those affordable units have a lesser amenity package?
That's what I'm saying.
And that's the, that's, so it's not that we're looking at the design, it's merely, do you want to have, allow them to have a different amenity package?
You know, the, the, even, even in this apartment buildings, the ones that are on the top floor, corner unit, they have, you know, better amenities, and there were better, better fixtures in there. They get more rent than the one which is on the first floor in the back, and may have different finishes. I think we're talking about the same thing, they can, they can do what, there, there is a base, and from there on, they can maybe upgrade.
Yep, there's, but I think there's two different concepts. To have a base and then allow those that wanna live more luxuriously to upgrade is different than saying, you know, you have a standard, and then for affordable uni, for, for affordable units, you can go substandard, it's okay.
No, I mean...
I'm personally opposed to that, I think the, there should be a standard for all the units. I think it's also gonna, it, it's gonna be very strange to have a building where some people live a certain way in certain units, and then these other designated units are, not only are they affordable, but they're actually, when you walk in, they're affordable too. I mean, they're built differently, they're, you know, low-quality finishes. And I, I, I just, it just doesn't sound right to me, so I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that problem.
I think we're going the, the wrong direction, because nobody was talking about substandard fixtures or anything like that.
Fixtures are not substandard, it's different. One is very expensive, the other one is something that you can use and enjoy, and you don't have problem with having eight thousand dollars.
But you're assuming something's very expensive, who said anything about very expensive? We're talking about a standard.
The builder wants to make it very luxury.
But how do you know, are you, you're talking about a theoretical builder?
What I was trying to suggest, that we leave it to the, the builder to, if he wants to buy different units, to be able to do it, not to put too much burden on them, make it expensive. I just wanted to say, we have to let them do as they wish. The builder to do the way he wants.
Okay, so by, by definition, when you say standard, it means standard, it's for everyone. So when you have a standard for units, and then something that's less than the standard in English language, that's substandard. I mean, what do you mean? I'm saying, we're discussing here whether we want a certain level of internal design, whatever you wanna call it, amenities designed for all the units, or whether we want different levels. So one is the standard, and the other one, that's the cheaper one, is the substandard. It's lesser than the standard. And, I mean, I'm speaking plain English, I don't know. You're saying it's not substandard, but that is the definition of substandard. I'm not saying sub, substandard meaning bad quality or faulty or broken, I just mean, not, not the par standard.
We're saying the same thing in a different way. As it was mentioned, there is a base, and from there, that base, you can upgrade. You cannot go below that base. So that's what it is.
So, I'm okay with that, I'm just not, not okay with the other way around.
The, the landlord, or the, the developer can build some of the units a lot higher finished than the base unit and rent it more.
But then the onus is on those people that want the luxurious, to want the luxury. The onus is not on the, on the developer to say, you know what, I'm gonna decide that these are gonna be sort of the good units, and this, since they're the affordable, we're gonna build substandard.
They choose which units can be affordable, because they will not allow the worst units to be affordable in that building. That's what the case, right? They, you pick and choose where the locations of those units are. So they're not in a very, uh, the darkest units in the back, and, uh, the one that gets no sunlight. They, they spread them out, so it's, it's, the, the, the location of the unit is determined by, by the housing as well.
Doesn't SB eighteen eighteen require exact compatibility? It does not. Wasn't there a lawsuit in a case in West Hollywood where they had a door? They had a door for the affordable units, and they had a door for the... Am I right?
I worked on this project.
Okay.
So what happened was, there was a project, and, and this has happened in a number of cities, but West Hollywood, it absolutely happened, where the developer was attempting to create a situation where all the affordable units were on one floor, and they weren't allowed to use the pool. Or any of the common areas in the recreational areas. It didn't go to a lawsuit, the city just said no.
So the standard is no pool, but the upgrade for everyone else is a pool.
Well, see, that was, well, that was, no, I think that's it, no, that's an absolutely appropriate point for you to make, and this is the equal enjoyment of the project question. So any of the common areas in, in the usage of the pool. I had, I had a downtown L.A. project like that too, where they said, oh, well, you can use the pool, but it costs a hundred dollars a month for all the tenants. And the city, again, said no. Uh, this is the corridor question, and it's what you guys are grappling with, is the corridor question. So where do you draw the line? It's a little bit easier on ownership projects, because then there is a base model, and people buy upgrades. It's trickier on rental projects, because different people move in, they're not, you know, as a general rule, a renter is not guiding what happens physically in an apartment. They're renting a done apartment, so it is, it's, it's not an easy question.
Ask a question, the, the projects that already are built, like, I don't know, Altana and all, all the other developments in downtown, they have, that, which have, uh, certain number of affordable units. Is the finish so different between the different units and the... Is the same thing?
It's exactly the same.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're, they're, I think...
Unfortunately, in those buildings, most of them, they're all cheap. They're all, yeah, we, we should have set standards, I, you know, but that's hindsight, of course. So going back to number ten.
Okay.
I understand what you recommend, recommendation was, I'm trying to tell which one that is on this list. Is it the flexibility one?
Uh, we, well, we're recommending closer to the exact, uh, comparability.
Exact, yeah, that's what I'm...
Okay.
Except we're talking about, we had the discussion on sizes.
Yeah, that's why I'm, that's why I'm confused, because exact comparability wouldn't be the flexibility on the sizes, that's what throws me off.
Exactly right, okay, so, yeah, under exact comparability, what we're saying is same size also. But then we say, but if you want smaller units, that's fine, just give us more.
Which choice is that?
So, but this, this choice...
Okay, so...
We'll come after it goes to planning.
So we'll, but, but we gotta vote on this now, so we gotta have sort of majority recommendations. So that's why I'm, I wanna make sure, so, exact comparability except for size.
Yes, where there's an exception.
And if lower size, uh, smaller size, more percentage of units.
That.
Okay, so, um, our next policy decision would be the, to allow for off-site production of affordable units, but given parameters. So KMA and staff is recommending that, that our inclusionary zoning ordinance does allow, uh, for off-site production of the affordable units, but with some parameters. Uh, one being, the off-site production wouldn't have to be within a half mile of the market-rate project. And that's frankly, so that, uh, the off-site units are not all crammed into one area of the city. Uh, again, we're saying comparable in size and interior, exterior improvements. And what we're saying, in the case of a developer that's building an ownership unit, if they would like to produce some of those affordable units off-site, those off-site units would have to be rental. Again, we're, we're trying to get away from developers building affordable ownership units versus pay the in-lug fee, and in particular, a, ownership unit here and there and everywhere. We're, we're trying to get away from that, so that's part of the reason for that policy, uh, recommendation there. So again, if, if, if a affordable developer, or developer's doing an ownership project, and he wants to meet that ownership, uh, production off-site, we're saying, fine, give us those number of units, make them rental. So those are the parameters that we're, we're suggesting for, um, an off-site production.
I'm not sure I understand what the logic behind that is, can you go through that again?
So, so with the, with the three parameters?
No, with the last one.
With the, with the last one.
With the rent, that, them having to be rentals if they're off-site, I don't...
Right, and we, and, I apologize, because we've been, uh, to it a couple of times, and I didn't really talk about the challenges with ownership on this, on, in this hearing. Uh, but the challenges with affordable ownership projects, uh, is that you're, you're, you're selling a unit to, uh, we're suggesting up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, so a moderate income. So that, that their means are limited in term, in, in comparison to somebody that's buying at market rate. When you have a rental project, and you have a management company managing those units, it's a lot different than when you have one or two units in an ownership project, where they bought the unit, they're on their own, with the exception of the city, you know, annually monitoring their income, so, so, well, it's very challenging to have affordable ownership units. It works with Habitat for Humanity, it works at Doran Gardens, where we partner with Heritage Housing Partners, because those are entities that didn't go away, they're still there. If owner, if units, if owners get into trouble, or for any various reasons, they have those organizations to fall back on. Under this scenario, those owners wouldn't. So we really don't want to see affordable ownership units built. We'd rather see the in-lug fee paid in those examples under this IZO. So that's why we're saying, if you're gonna build an ownership project, and you have an eleven percent, which would be the staff's recommendation, uh, requirement for affordable, if you can put all eleven percent in your project that you're building, so be it, fine, we have no issue. If you want to meet your off, your production off-site, so some of that eleven, or all of that eleven affordable units, you wanna do it within a half mile, but not in that building. What we're saying is, that's fine, but make them rental, make those units rental. So that's, that's the idea behind that, that recommendation.
And, and we understand it runs contrary to the, the council's, uh, desire to see more ownership. That's why it's a policy decision for you. Uh, if you want to allow those units to be built off-site, we will certainly design the program to do it. Where we're, if they were built within the initial project, the original project, there's a concentration of people that they can lean on each other. And, and there's, there's probably a homeowners association. But if you have one or two units that are kinda off on their own, um, and that income is limited, you know that they've got taxes that, at market rate, they've got utilities at market rate, uh, they've got other things at market rate. You just don't wanna put that burden on somebody that's out there by themselves. But again, policy decision on the council's part.
Okay. Two technical questions. Let's say, by code, you're allowed to build a hundred units, I'm just rounding it up. You use the SB eighteen eighteen, you're a hundred and thirty-five units, right? The off-site, uh, off-site affordable units that you're providing, do they have to be brand-new? Or you can purchase an apartment building and upgrade it and say...
Now, now we're gonna get...
She's got an answer for it.
You can't do off-site and use density bonus.
You can't do off-site use, okay. So the other question is, base, your, your zoning is determined by your, the size of your property, size of your lot. This is a technical question more for Mr. Algenia. This is a technical question more for Mr. Martin. So if the code allows you to build, uh, up to, let's say if you're in R-1250, you go down to R-1000, and, uh, you're allowed to build a hundred units plus thirty-five units, it's a hundred and thirty-five units. When you wanna develop off-site, let's say even if you provide new, new, uh, units, do you use that, the, the size of that property to get credit for your major project? Or that property has to provide enough, uh, land for its own? If it's a larger project, let's say you put ten units there, you need ten thousand square feet off-site, but your land is twenty thousand square feet. Can you use the balance of that for your main project or not?
I, I think what you're asking is a, a density transfer, and the answer is today, no.
Okay.
Right. We, we don't have a mechanism to do.
You don't have a density transfer mech, mechanism in, in our, in our program, plus the off-site has to be brand new. It cannot be a used project, or, I mean, an older building that is being, that's being rehabbed. Existing project, okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I was, I'm gonna ask, uh, council. I'm curious, could you allow an acquisition rehab and require more units?
Require more units of what?
So let's say that off-site, you've gotta provide ten units and you're gonna build them off-site. You acquire a twenty-unit, um, building and you retrofit all twenty units.
We'd have to look at that, you might be able, you, you should be able to do that, but I.
That, where I, where I would, where I always get concerned is, are, is the, the property being purchased and small A affordable, uh, project. In other words, rents are lower there just by nature of the market. And by acquiring that and converting it, do you take affordable units off the market? Presumably, you'd be putting affordable families back in.
I think, I, I mean, personally, I'm only one vote, but my goal is to have the, the units built within the project, so it won't be off-site. You won't take necessarily a, a units that are affordable already and use that to your benefit. I think it has to be on-site and has to be brand new.
Yeah, and, and Mike will get to this next, uh, next piece of that, um, which, which does make it difficult, um, to, to, to acquire something off-site and use those units. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so then the next policy is on acquisition rehabilitation. So if you want to allow the developer to meet some of the affordable requirements under the IZO through acquisition rehabilitation.
Which number is this in?
Twelve? Yeah, so, well, what staff and Kaiser Marston recommended, that you do allow that, you don't have to, but allow that, but again, make it, um, give it parameters as well. Our suggestion is that existing buildings are in substantial, or in need of substantial rehabilitation, uh, with the after rehab value of twenty percent of renter. Uh, and we're also saying that the units should be vacant for ninety days or longer. So we don't want to see you meet that, uh, requirement for the affordable units by acquiring a, a unit, or a project that's already occupied, possibly with low income already, move all those folks out and then, and then, you're not, you're not getting any new units that way.
But it's the same thing, I mean, existing building in need of substantial rehab is the same thing. I mean, even if you rehab it, it's an older building that would be more affordable in general than, than, than newer units. So by allowing that, if there are units that are ninety days, I don't know, it's just. I'm not really comfortable with this one.
Yeah, because it may.
Because you, you take, if there are older prop, properties in a different part of the town, and if they're even in, they're habitable, they're more affordable than the ones that are in downtown and they're brand new. So you're taking those units that are almost affordable and you've taken that to, into consideration for your own project, and you're not providing that extra units that we need for, for affordability. That's, that's the, that's the, that's the key.
That's, that's why we have the ninety-day vacant, they have to be vacant for at least ninety days, meaning they're not occupied, they're in need of substantial rehab. Somebody's gotta go in and, and take care of that. We, we appreciate that this is a very difficult standard to meet, and it's intended to be that. So you build on-site.
But I don't know how many buildings in the city are there to have, you know, all the units vacant for ninety days. We don't want even, you know, people to go purchase these, these buildings and vacate this prop, uh, the units and, and keep it for ninety days and say, this is it. I think this is kind of tricky, so I don't know, I'm, let's, let's move on.
It says, if they will find a building which will be ninety days empty, nobody is using it, is vacant for ninety days, then they have the opportunity to purchase it.
If I could just add a comment to, to help with, at least what the idea was from staff and Kaiser Marston. The units are supposed to be basically uninhabitable to qualify to meet this standard, and that's why they would've been vacant, is because you wouldn't be allowing people to live in them. The idea is exactly what you're all discussing, is why replace what's already sort of almost affordable housing and fulfill a requirement so you haven't had a net gain? And, and again, as, as Phil said, or Mike, I'm not sure who, um, you don't have to accept this. You can say, no, we're not gonna allow acquisition rehab, and that's fine, that's, it's a policy decision. I just wanted to make it clear, at least from our perspective, it was you're dealing in uninhabitable units, so one of the things you're, you're doing is you're improving the housing stock. And then as Phil added, you could, you can make it a higher percentage, if you want, much like you, on the small units, you were gonna make it a higher percentage. We've worked on, on programs that do that, so that you get more units. But again, that's a policy decision.
And, and to piggyback on that, so let's say we do allow for the off-site and, under these requirements, and after the rehab, the end product is not comparable to what it would've been in the project itself, in the building itself.
Right.
How do we, what's, what, what recourse do we have then?
So there, there again, it's your, it would be your decision. If, um, you're gonna allow the act rehab, uh, as part of the requirement, right? And they do increase the value of that building by at least twenty percent or, or greater, um, it would be your call, another one of your policy decisions. Do those units have to be comparable to the market rate units that are in the other building? Size, finishings, the whole nine yards, again, that would be your decision. Okay, so lastly, um, the, what we call the phase-in option, number thirteen. This is where we think we have heard consensus from the council that every project that does not, did not already bil, uh, pull a building permit, the IZO would apply to it. So unless that is different, um, staff feels like that's the one box we've been able to check off before tonight's meeting.
Is that it?
That's it for the IZO.
One question, uh, I'm sorry, on number seven, what was your recommendation?
My apologies, that is an honor. We haven't talked about the in-lug. We haven't talked about the.
Ownership unit affordability.
Right. Yes, yeah, my apologies, that is, we have not got into the compliance alternatives, which is the inclusionary, uh, the fee. It feels like we went through it all, sorry.
Mike was talking about number seven.
Number seven?
Yeah, number four, affordability.
Number seven?
I believe that was a hundred and twenty percent.
Yeah, one oh one to one twenty.
Yes.
One oh one to one twenty.
Yes, that's right.
Got it. And that is again, is the question that I asked, so you have to be thirty percent of your hundred and twenty percent of the A, AMI.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Thank you.
So, so the next thing would be then to talk about the in-lug fees. So these are the fees that you, the developer would pay, uh, rather than build the affordable units. What we've put together with KMA's, from KMA's analysis, is a recommendation of, basically a schedule of fee. We, we've done a couple of things here, just generally speaking. What we did was, you can see the ownership fee is considerably less, roughly half what it is for rental. And again, that is to incentivize ownership developers to just pay the fee versus build the units, uh, for the reasons we've talked about before. Another thing that it does, obviously, it wouldn't apply to units of four units or less, because staff's recommendation is those would be exempt from the IZO entirely. And then another thing that it does with this schedule is, um, recognize that there is economies of scale with larger projects. So twenty-one units or greater, those projects would pay the higher fee, fifty-five dollars per square foot on rental, twenty-six dollars, thirty cents on ownership. And then it, it gradually goes down per square foot, sixteen through ten, twenty pays a little less fee, eleven through fifteen pays a little less fee, all the way down to five units. That's what staff recommends, that is not, um, you're not bound by that. A more simpler thing would be, obviously, you can choose that the IZO applies to units, uh, products greater than five units. So that would affect this fee schedule. You could also decide, you know, projects five through twenty units, a set fee for ownership, a set fee for rental. Call it at the fee we've recommended at ten units. There's any number of things you can do here. And this is where I'd probably ask, uh, Kaiser Marston to come up. They're the ones that created the, or did all the analysis that went into, um, this recommended fee schedule.
Is this the, the norm for, I know from twenty-one units and up, it's twenty-six dollars and thirty cents for ownership and then fifty-five dollars for apartment rentals, rental apartments. Is it the norm that the, the guy who builds twenty-two units pays the same fee as the guy who builds a hundred and fifty units?
Uh, I would, I would have, have to ask.
The economies of scale.
She's, she's done this in various cities.
Because we've done that for smaller units, I mean, from five units to twenty units, but from there on, it just stops at one point, it just flattens out.
Right, so we did the economic analysis of both the fees for the rental and the ownership projects based on a prototype project that was of, of a larger size. And so that, so that takes into account the economies of scales of having a big project. So, yes, so for twenty-one units, it's the same as for a hundred units, as, as for three hundred units. It has a differential impact at twenty-one units. That's just a fairly commonplace, but for example, we're allowing, in some cities I'm working in, we're allowing it thirty units. And so there, I'm, what I'm trying to say is there's not magic to it, this twenty's pretty common. The other thing is, we're not encouraging the ability to pay the fee for larger projects, for, for rental projects. We'd like developers to actually build the units on-site. And so one of the reasons the fee is higher, in addition to the economic analysis, is to encourage production rather than fee payment. One of the reasons for ownership where it's lower is, A, the economic analysis, but B, because of the ideas that, that Mike told you, is we'd like, we'd like to encourage payment of the fee as, as a recommendation. Again, you don't have to accept it.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that does conclude the presentation on the inclusionary zoning.
Shall we sum up the inclusionary zoning and then move on to the commercial inch, please?
That'd be, that'd be very appreciated.
Let's do that then.
Do you have any cards, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, in fact, I thank you for the reminder, sir. I do have some cards, and we'll start with Diana Coronado from Building Industry Association, followed by Rubik Avanesian.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Diana Coronado, and I'm here representing the Building Industry Association. The Building Industry Association represents one thousand two hundred companies who employ over a hundred thousand people, all affiliated with the building process. That includes your roofers, electricians, and construction workers. We are here today to provide comments on the preparation of an inclusionary zoning ordinance and/or development impact fee. From the conversation I've heard, it sounds like the development impact fee is related to commercial, but of course, we represent residential, so that's something to take into consideration throughout my comments. Our primary concern with these ordinances is the potential to increase the cost of housing. Inclusionary zoning ordinances and development impact fees stand to reduce housing supply by making the costs of housing production more expensive, which can disincentivize builders to move forward with the housing project. Affordable units are the same cost to produce as market rate units, but are sold or rented for substantially less money, as you heard in the presentation. If this ordinance or fee is pursued, it absolutely must include options and incentives for builders that will work to offset the costs to create those, to create those inclusionary units or those development impact fees. The city and industry stakeholders should sit down and together to find out what housing policies will truly result in affordable housing production without further increasing the house of, the costs of housing. The cost to produce a home today is more expensive than ever and is giving great pause to potential housing producers. The ever-increasing costs of land acquisition, materials, labor, lengthy entitlement processes, and especially overburdensome fees and regulations have made building a home one of the most uncertain and risky investments, with little to no guarantee of an equitable return on investment. Builders can no longer afford to absorb these costs, and in the midst of a housing crisis, it is not helpful for the city to net, to negatively affect housing affordability by proving the passage of these types of policies. If you do decide to move forward with these policies and these ordinances, we urge you to direct staff to return with an ordinance that does not increase overall cost of housing or reduce housing production. Really think thoughtfully about providing that balance. Development, uh, community and those who are producing housing definitely want to help the affordability crisis. It's something that we are gonna have to do throughout the region to meet the housing needs. But we wanna work with you to make sure that those affordable housing units actually get made and developers or builders, especially the market rate builders and even the affordable housing builders, don't come into the city and are D, are not interested in building here because of these policies. Um, it sounds like there's a lot of questions left from this council, and we wanna help work with you to make sure that you have a very sound policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Rubik Avanesian?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, city staff. My name is Rubik Avanesian, Cranbrook Realty Corp., resident, uh, business owner, property owner, City of Glendale and other cities. I have spoken on this, uh, even about eighteen years ago in City of Pasadena, when Kaiser Marston was making the presentation in Pasadena. This, uh, I mean, support of the proposal, I think, uh, give credit to the council finally coming forward with this. But do realize, you cannot overburden the developers. The cost of per unit, as the prior speaker before me touched on, is about three hundred fifty to four hundred fifty thousand dollars. On rental units, close to about three fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. So we do wanna encourage the developers to develop it. Basically, purpose of the ordinance is, bear in mind, any developer can take advantage of SB 1818 without having to do anything else, comply with that and get the density bonus and comply with providing those affordable units. There were some discussions on the unit sizes, I think, uh, given each area and the zoning in the city, it should be citywide, and the zoning will dictate that, because in a, uh, lower density zoning, the developer will be forced to do the, uh, even with the density bonus thirty-five percent, uh, you know, getting two incentives or less, twenty-five percent, they'll do the larger units. That's just the rule of thumb, based on the zoning, so it should be citywide. We brought this to council about, back in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we, I personally had conversations with a couple of the council members, but apparently at that time, the desire wasn't there to proceed. I give credit to the council for, uh, deciding to move forward with this. It's a little bit late after the party, after four thousand units have been built. My clients developed about twelve hundred of those four thousand units, and several often we advised to take advantage of SB 1818 and did. So I think between the twelve hundred units, there were about forty or fifty affordable units that came to the market. I wish the ordinance back in oh seven, oh eight had come forth and had gotten passed, and, uh, so you would've had about four thou, four hundred affordable units. Touching back on the ten thousand five hundred units, I think we need to closely look at that number to see how many are those applicants or Glendale residents. Glendale, City of Glendale is not here to provide housing for the entire L.A. County, because everybody likes to live in. everybody likes to live in city of Glendale, it's the desirable community. We need to look how many are Glendale residents and kind of city can address the goal of how many of those occupants are. As far as, there was some conversation on the quality. Developers don't discriminate when you're building fifty or a hundred units. You don't want to order too many different things. It's pretty consistent. There was some discussion, I'll give you an example if I may, a toilet. You know, they can pretty much order the same color, you know, in condos, it comes into the play that higher, better quality, heated, so on and so forth. Those are the main issues that I think. But again, we do work with developers, and again, in the last ten years, my clients have developed about eight thousand units, Pasadena, Glendale, North Hollywood, Woodland Hills, so be glad to work with the staff in coming up. A lot of the questions were, we need to be consistent with SB eighteen eighteen to encourage the developers by having this requirement to do develop the units. Again, it is a risk, and the shortage is due to a lot of bureaucracy at various levels at different cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last speaker. So let's go back to the design worksheet and go back to item number one. If anyone wants to say anything more than what's already been said on this issue, and I think all of us spoke about this, maybe with a show of hand, who wants this to be citywide?
So we have to create a record?
Well, I think when we're done, well, Mr. Fortney, we'll repeat what the consensus was.
Okay.
So we have the record as part of the motion.
I mean, right, there may not be consensus there. This one's four to one. Type of development, the choices are own, yes, sir?
Why we don't turn in this sheet and they would let them or more?
We have to get it on the record.
Oh, okay. Back to type of development, choices are ownership, rental, both. And the staff recommendation is both, all in favor of both. So that's unanimous. Project threshold size. Staff recommendation is any five and above, and I think we had, we heard sentiments about maybe more than five, but.
My thing is ten and above.
So we have one of ten above. You want to try five and above first?
Five and above.
So it's, were you not for five? Oh, you are, okay, all right. Next one is percentage of rental units which must be affordable, and staff recommendation is fifteen percent. Yep, that's fine. And the next one is percentage of ownership units which must be affordable. It's not on this list, eleven percent is the staff recommendation. Rental unit affordability level, I believe staff recommendation was fifty-one to eighty percent of AMI. And next one is ownership unit affordability level, and staff recommendation was one oh one to one hundred and twenty AMI. Duration of affordability requirements, staff recommendation for rental was fifty-five years.
On this one, which you're, maybe you want to look at, I would suggest in fifty-five years on number nine.
On the, on number nine? Okay, so let's try the staff recommendation first, and then we'll try the fifty-five years. So staff recommendation of forty-five years, which I guess was based on, what was it based on?
Based on.
Industry, industry standard. But that's only two, so we'll go fifty-five years. So fifty-five it is. Next is design standard, so from what I understand, the recommendation was exact comparability except for size, and for smaller sizes, we would require a higher percentage of units. Yes. No, that's enough for you?
I was going to say different standards if it was, but I, okay, I, okay.
Okay, thank you. Next one is off-site production, distance was, staff recommendation, half a mile of market rate project.
I'm sorry, I want to ask for distance of two miles, because half a mile to find a property will be so difficult for the developer to find within half a miles of the main project.
And I agree, I, I think that's a very valid concern. I'm just saying, two miles means, for example, I live in northwest, two miles means somewhere down by Saint Mary's Church on Central. I mean, that's an entire universe, a different universe in terms of sort of.
Saint Mary's Church?
Yeah.
Two miles?
Yeah.
From your house?
Yeah, it is.
In northwest to?
Yes, when I, my leg wasn't in this condition, I've done that walk quite a few times.
Saint Mary's on Central?
Two miles. Check your, check your smartphone, you'll see. I'm, I'm just describing to you how, how, how different the neighborhoods are within a two-mile.
Half a mile, we are putting so much burden on the developer.
I think that the point is, Mr. Masajani, I think the point is, we want to encourage them to build within the development, instead of building something on northwest Glendale, for example, and then have affordable units in the southest part of the city.
I know, but I mean, half a mile, you put so much burden. It's too close that you force them to find a property, which will be very difficult, and those who want to sell to the developer also will consider that.
But that, that makes them build it, build it into their development. I think that's the, the main goal.
How about if I offer one mile? Anybody interested on one mile? Yeah, yeah, one mile?
One mile? No, half mile, you sell the half.
I'm okay with one mile.
I'm okay with.
I'm okay.
All right, how about a mile? Design, I think the recommendation was comparable size.
Comparable size?
On this, on off-site production, it was, yeah, for off-site, for off-site only, off-site only, comparable size. Mr. Majorian?
Yes.
Yeah. And twelve is acquisition rehab. The first category is existing building subject to acquisition and rehabilitation must be cited for substantial building code violation. That's kind of very specific. Yeah? Okay. Yes, all of the units must be vacant.
I'm a no on that.
You're a no on that?
Yes.
Four oh five. Sorry, who is?
Yeah. So that's a, that's a four one, and you, you mind restating your reasons, because I want to.
Because, because if you have a building that is in need of substantial, it's in a substantial, has substantial code violations, no matter what you do to it, you cannot bring it to the standard that's comparable to the brand-new building that you're building somewhere else. And this is not a brand-new development. So basically, those are going to be, those affordable units that are there already, you're using those to the credit, your, to your project. Same thing with the ones with ninety days or longer. I mean, this, this number twelve on all three of these items, I'm, I'm, I'm no on all.
So you, you just don't want acquisition and rehab, basically?
No, if it's off-site, it has to be a new project.
Even the off-site has to be new, that's your position, okay.
But the point is that they're going to find a building which is what they call, it's repairable, you can bring to the standard. They're not going to buy a property that there are so much, so much violation that it's, they won't be able to bring to the right standard.
What they're saying is, what they're saying is, a property that is in need of, it's, it's, has substantial building code violations, and most of these are the very old buildings, very, very old dilapidated buildings that have those.
Doesn't make sense, they won't buy. They won't acquire. This is, they're in violation of the code, but you can bring it to the standard. Otherwise, they won't purchase it. How they can make it to the code? That's, that's what I thought, this is what it's saying.
Yeah, but again, we agree to disagree on this. I think because these are very old units, they can be rehabbed and rented a little bit more affordable rents, because they're older buildings, no AC units or what have you, but if they use that towards their brand-new project, they're not adding anything to our, our net gain, basically. We don't have that net gain that we're looking for.
So I agree with that argument, not to go buy an old building. This is, if they find a building which is vacated for ninety days and nobody going to use it, or they trying to do something with it, so we can, if we can bring it to the standard, I don't see why we shouldn't buy it. I mean, this is not.
Not us, this is for the developers, not us. We're not buying this.
The developer, they have the chance to use it and bring it to the offer, to those who can live in there quicker, rather than wait until they put up a new building. That's what I thought. This will bring to the point faster. That's what I was hoping from this.
I understand.
Okay, so maybe we'll go on to the second category, which is all of the units must be vacant for ninety days or longer. I know that, you know, Mr. Carpetian's vote is. Yes?
I mean, in the end, in the end, staff is going to determine whether they are, what's the word, compatible. Comparable, sorry, comparable. So give it, I see.
And the last one is rehabilitation, the building is substantial, meaning the after-rehab value must be at least twenty-five percent greater than the pre-rehab value of the building. As a safeguard against the concern that Mr. Carpetian has, is twenty-five percent too low, the number?
Or is it?
You're okay with it? You're okay with it?
Yeah, with it.
Okay.
It's okay, go ahead.
And last category is phase-in option. Question is, there's a consensus among city council members that no project should be exempt from the inclusionary zoning ordinance if it has not already secured building permits. Staff defers to council's consensus without concern.
Yes.
It's a yes? It's a yes, okay. Okay.
And the in-lu fees? The in-lu fees?
Yeah. And the fees, yeah, since we, we agreed five and above, then this is the table that we have in front of us. Are we okay with this table, the fee table?
Yes, I'm, I'm not okay with the fee table. I think five to ten should be the same fee, maybe the, the lowest one, because that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing with the twenty-one plus, so a hundred units and twenty-two units, they pay the same fee. I think from five to ten, they have to pay the ten fifty and twenty-two eleven. That's my, my thing now.
How about if they pay fifteen point seventy-five for all of them?
No, no, then you, you're increasing the ones that are five units, you're putting more burden on them.
How about we, we, we try the staff recommendation first? Yeah.
Twenty-six fifty-four, or twenty-six thirty for, for everything up until ten, correct?
No, no, it's just, no, whatever staff is recommending, which is five units, it's an escalating table of fees. I'm okay with it.
I'm, I'm not okay with it.
Right, right, duly noted.
I'm a no, yeah.
I think that's, that's all we have on this.
Yeah, okay. So I can just go back quickly from what I heard and just hopefully, well, it doesn't change. I think on geographic coverage, what I heard was four, four oh five, agree on a citywide inclusionary zoning ordinance. Under type development, if I understood, it was unanimous.
Both.
That it would apply to both, right? Four oh five in terms of product threshold size, five units or greater.
Right.
I heard unanimous on fifteen percent affordable for rental.
Yes.
I heard eleven percent affordable for ownership. That was unanimous, yes. Unanimous, again, targeting up to eighty percent AMI rental.
That's right.
Unanimous on up to one hundred twenty percent AMI for ownership.
Correct.
We trust you, that's why we accept whatever you recommend.
Right, thank you. The range of affordability, I heard unanimous, fifty-five years for both ownership and rental.
That's right.
That's eight and nine.
Unanimous, uh-huh.
Okay. I heard unanimous under exact comparability for number ten, design standards. Is that right?
With the, sort of the, the expanded definition.
With the expanded definition, that if they want to build smaller units, they build more units.
Right.
Right. Off-site production, I heard unanimous within one mile of the market rate project.
Right.
I also heard unanimous on comparable size of those off-site units? Yes?
Yes, yes.
I believe on act rehab, the first one that the code violations, I heard four oh five, agree.
Right.
Same with vacant for ninety days.
Right.
Four oh five, also four oh five with respect to twenty-five percent greater value after rehab.
Correct.
Okay. Finally, I, phase-in option.
Unanimous.
Staff understood, it's consensus, it is still consensus. And then four out of five, oh, I told you, okay, four out of five on in-lu fees. Yes?
Yes.
So can we get a motion on item one A, Mr. Mayor, with those items? And one, one A is initiating the, the amendment.
Yes.
This is on a code.
So I'm sorry, how do I vote on this? Because I voted for most of them.
Break it down, you can vote either one, or you could just vote no, and we could just, because it has to come back anyway, so my suggestion is just to have it as one motion, and if you want to vote no, or we can break them up into individual motions, but then it'll take a long time. So it's up to, it's up to the council how you want to handle that.
If you want to make a specific record, you want to.
Yeah, or we can do it this way, we can, so we have the motion with the record. If you want, you can make, with that on the, with that motion, and I, I don't know if it was seconded or not, but once it gets seconded, you can make an emotion to, you can make a motion to amend it to your policy preferences, and then if that fails, then the council would move on to the, to the motion itself.
Can the first motion be with the, with the voting records that we have?
Yes, the first motion is, as Mr. Fortney just, just stated it, and if you want to, if you want to make a motion to amend it, you can do that. I wouldn't recommend a substitute motion, I just make a motion remending it, then the council can vote on that. If it doesn't pass, then they would go back to the main motion and.
Or it doesn't get seconded.
Yeah, correct. Correct.
So you want to propose a substitute motion?
Yes.
And substitute motion is the recommendation with your preferences?
Yes.
Which would be, well, first, before the substitute motion, was there a second on?
No, there was no second.
Oh, okay, so do you want to make a, a motion then? It's not even substitute motion?
Yeah, I make a motion with my, with my preferences.
So do we have a second for Ms. Devine's motion? Right, is that how we want to do it?
Well, no, it wasn't seconded, that's why, so now.
Well, she, she didn't have a chance for anyone to second it. Just tell us what to do, too.
I, I would prefer to get a second on Ms. Councilmember Devine's motion first.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Do we have a second for Councilmember Devine's motion?
This is the one that we.
Yeah, this is the one that we all. Okay, so now we have a second.
Substitute motion with the items that, that we, that I voted against, so.
Okay, so substitute motion on that one, the items which were.
Item number twelve?
No, item number three.
Number three, you do ten units?
Number three, yeah.
And you would do.
Twelve.
And twelve. The in-lu fee schedule?
And the in-lu fees.
So that motion needs, that substitute motion needs a second.
And if it doesn't get one?
It fails.
Okay.
Okay, so now we can go to the main motion.
So but I, I would vote no on the main motion. Okay, got it.
All right, maybe we have the roll call on the first motion. Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
See, this is, this is kind of difficult, because I voted for most of it, except like for three or two, I don't want to vote against the whole thing.
And you made, I think you made your record.
You made your record already.
On height?
No. Or should I vote yes? Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Majorian?
Yes.
Mayor Sonarian?
Yes.
And now we move on to any other.
He's got to go through item one B, which is the commercial impact fee.
Yes, and I promise you, this is less complicated than the IZO.
Don't be sure, don't be so sure.
I almost promised, so, okay. So the commercial development impact fee, before we talk about the specific policy, I just wanted to say, and the staff report alludes to this, there's not many cities in Southern California that have a commercial development impact fee specific to the benefit of affordable housing. And the city of Glendale does have a commercial development impact fee, but it's to the benefit of parks and library, so. In terms of the policy decisions that you would have to make, some of them are similar, or some exactly the same, actually, as the IZO, one being, would it be citywide, or would you want to target specific areas of the city? or would you want to target specific areas of the city? What type of development, what type of commercial development would the fee apply to, whether it be hotel, office, retail, auto dealership, or similarly all commercial projects? I bring, well, there's a couple of reasons I bring that up. The analysis KMA did looked at the, again, we're talking about the highest legally defensible fee versus the highest financially feasible fee. So they looked at different commercial uses when they did their analysis. So we, we, we talk about different commercial developments in that respect. I also bring it up because the current commercial development impact fee in the city of Glendale that benefits parks and library has a different fee for the different uses. So long end of the analysis to KMA did, their legally defensible fee for some of these uses was astronomical. It's a fee that you would never think to apply to them, north of two hundred dollars a square foot on some of those fees. But what their recommendation, what staff's recommendation as well, is that you apply a fee of between three and five dollars to any one of those commercial uses that you would like to target. If you would like to exempt hotel, or you would like to exempt auto dealership, that's entirely up to you. You don't have to adopt the commercial development impact fee on any of them. So, but, so we kind of tailored this towards what we already have in existence in terms of the, the parks and library, the commercial development impact fee for parks and library. So kind of going under the IZO, the same process that we did, I would just go through each of the policy decisions now. First being the geographic area. Again, do you want a commercial development impact fee to benefit affordable housing be citywide, or do you want it to target specific areas?
Citywide.
Citywide.
Okay. And do you want it to apply to all types of commercial development, including hotel, office, retail, auto dealership? Or would you like to exempt any of those uses?
An exemption would be similar to an incentive.
Are they exempt now?
To the park and library, if yes. Hotel and auto dealership are exempt.
I want, I would like to keep it the same way as to.
Same with parks and library?
Yeah.
Okay, so we would exempt hotel and auto dealership?
To be specific, how does a hotel increase demand for affordable housing? Does it?
Yes, yeah, any one of these, any one of these uses, so you bring on this new uses, that does then increase the demand for affordable housing.
You have, you create jobs and those people need to live somewhere.
It's sort of a.
It's indirect.
Once removed, kind of, it's indirect, yeah.
Yes, right. And again, the legally defensible fees that you could charge are astronomical compared to what we're actually recommending.
And if I might, I, I noticed that they've determined the economically feasible fee limit would range from five to fifteen square feet.
Yes.
I thought you said three, you were recommending three?
Yes, so what we're, but what we're, so there's the legally defensible.
Oh.
Then there's the financially feasible. And then there's what we're actually recommending, which is even lower than that. So we're recommending between three and five dollars a square foot. But it, it's, for some uses, it's financially feasible to have a higher fee than five dollars a square foot. What we're recommending is between three and five dollars.
Which, which is closer to what other cities have.
Okay, because I was going to recommend a little like eight dollars, like right in between the three and fifteen. That way, bring in at least some extra.
What, what we find in that is then we're the highest for that fee, and you may discourage some commercial development. So we're, we're trying to, that's the three to five is a range that other cities are charging, acknowledging that they could perhaps go higher, but they've left it at that three to five.
So, I'm sorry, so we, we decided on citywide already, and we decided on?
Exempt hotels.
Exempt hotels and, and dealerships, and now we're on number three. Your recommendation is eight, you don't want to go, I think three to five is fine.
So on three, I apologize, we hadn't covered that yet. The parks and library fee exempts projects less than twelve hundred fifty square feet. So that, that's an example of what you may want to hear.
Nobody builds a twelve hundred square foot new office building or, or retail space. So what is the?
Twelve fifty, I guess.
Twelve fifty, is number?
Threshold?
Yeah, the threshold is twelve fifty, which is fine. But, but the, the amount for per square foot, that's what you're.
Yeah.
And recommendation was what?
Three to five.
Three to five, and.
And the twelve hundred fifty square feet or below would be exempt.
And Kate Marston says that the feasible, economically feasible range is five to fifteen. So I thought maybe eight dollars.
About four dollars, just below the feasible, because then if you do eight, then the five-dollar project becomes impossible.
Okay.
So, three to five?
Three to five, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would just throw in there, buried in my stuff is the limits, the financially feasible limits for each of those uses. So if you wanted, if you wanted anything beyond three to five dollars a square foot, I would have to come back to you. Buried in here is our limits, but I don't have that right in front of me.
How about three to five?
But it is three to five.
Four dollars.
Okay. And I, and I would have to ask, the three to five, is, is there a specific number or just three to five at this point?
Four.
Four, how about four?
Four.
Four dollars. And that applies to office, retail, all commercial?
Because that was such a scientific answer.
Office, retail, and all commercial.
And would you like that similar, must-have a building permit?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
The exempt?
Yes.
And then I think the last item we have is initiate a fee change on the housing. I'm sorry.
The parks and library.
The parks and library fee. We, with, if you were to implement inclusionary housing, you would, what's the word, unintentionally be providing an incentive, or you would be, you'd be giving a discount to developers, given an incentive we currently have for affordable housing. So we're recommending that we adjust the limit of housing, so twenty percent, if you put twenty percent affordable in your project, you get five percent discount on your park and rec fee, and we go up from there. Currently, it's five percent?
Yes, five percent gives you fifty percent, or twenty-five percent, I apologize. A five percent, providing five percent affordable currently gives you a twenty-five percent reduction in the parks and library fee.
That has to, that has to be changed.
Yes.
So that's what, we'll, we'll bring that back as well.
Right, we, we discussed that, that item, that, that's a, something that needs to be changed immediately.
On B and C, and D, I guess. B would be on the commercial impact fee with the items that you just went through, and then C would be parks, and then D is a, do you have another item? Resolution appropriation, or is it just C? Oh, that's it, sorry, just B and C.
That's enough.
I'll make that motion.
Both, right? B and C together?
Oh, there, there is a D and an E. Ah, see, sorry.
Try the page.
Sorry. So do you use for the contracts?
Five hundred dollars.
Sorry, Kathy.
And then. And then E is actually a housing authority motion, so we need a, we'll need a different motion for that.
So can we do B and C and then we'll do E, and then we'll do E, right?
Sure, you can, you can do B, C, and E.
So we did, we have a motion for B and C.
Okay.
Mr. Attorney, you said they can do B, C, and?
You can do D as well if you want, all together at the same time.
B, C, and D together?
Yeah, they're all council items, I think, yes.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Can we have the roll call, please? Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Housing authority now?
We need a motion on, on one E.
Yeah.
I'll move, I'll move E.
Second.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
This is.
I'm sorry, was this?
Housing.
Authority members, Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Brazian?
Yes.
Chair Agajanian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, do, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
For council?
So moved.
Second.
For housing authority? So moved.
Second.
We have the set hence, so we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good late afternoon again. Yeah, we have.